Built a large drinking area outside along with the music venue platform. Point three drainage, sewage and water supply in the area and to the site. These have already been installed prior to a planning agreement. We already struggle with an overworked sewage plant, reduced water pressure. There have been no soakways tests carried out on the site. And due to the quality of the earth, which is mainly clay in the area. We do fear that this will cause a runoff of water, which could be a risk to our properties as well as to the highway. Point four access and roads. Entrance to the proposed site is within a 20 mile an hour restriction. And it falls 40 metres, not 50 metres as stated by the highways. From a very severe bend in the road and it is near to the brow of the hill, reducing clear vision for driving. There are no road crossings within that area. It suffers from heavy traffic, motorcycles, cycles, pedestrians and lorries. And sadly, not all adhere to the speed limit or driving etiquette. Point five wildlife. Sadly, trees, hedges have already been removed and groundwork carried out. That includes the installation of sewage pipes, water pipes and hard standing areas and a toilet shower block. This has all been done prior to planning agreement. The trees have been removed during the time of nesting and have caused problems for the wildlife. Similar to the wildlife, no studies have been carried out to what wildlife are in that area. And are there any protected species there? Point six. There will be an increase of antisocial behaviour. We're already having to struggle with persons leaving soiled nappies on the roads, pavements, drunkenness, urinating and vomiting in public places, shouting, swearing, loud music. The list goes on, it's endless. Point seven, work has already carried out on the site. Most of the work has been carried out. It has caused damage to council property on the highway. They've damaged flagstones, which are going to be a trip hazard to anybody using them. And we question, has planning been granted? As we've been in contact with the enforcement department at Newton Abbott and they have failed to act or to respond. The conclusion to this application, the Warren has a long history with the holiday industry. However, since the 1960s, it has been steamrolled away from its farmlands, its open spaces, its destroyed nature habitat and made local residents prisoners of its industry. To allow the development to go ahead will go against the national and local policy to reduce carbon footprint, emissions and environmental reductions. I wish to thank you all for listening to us today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr James. I appreciate you coming along today. Obviously, you're welcome to stay in the meeting, but I won't be able to ask you to comment or to make any other comments to the piece that you've just added, but I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, and please call me Anthony.
Okay, no problem. Right, so we turn our attention to Matt Myers. Mr Myers, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello? Can I ask which item on the agenda are you coming to speak about this evening?
I'm here to speak about the application for a camping site in Dawlish Warren.
Okay. You have three minutes, please, please go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to say that I'm for the proposal of the campsite in Dawlish Warren. As a local resident, it's nice to see a refreshing new take on camping that's almost going back to roots as opposed to the typical sort of static caravan developments that, you know, unfortunately you've seen all over Dawlish Warren. Looking at the planning proposal, it's for 26 five metre bell tents pre-erected on the piece of land with a shower block and a small reception building. The proposal is, looks pretty sustainable. They're using green energy, which, you know, everybody's trying to push for at the moment. It's, you know, looking at the report on the road, obviously this, as Anthony said, there's an issue with the road. There is a highways report there to say that it is not going to cause an issue to the current traffic on the road. There's a lot of parking spaces provided with the development, which I think is good. And I think that the local economy really needs something to sort of boost, you know, and bring something back to the area, start bringing people to the area. Because as I'm sure you can appreciate, it's been a bit of a struggle. And I think everybody needs to sort of like, you know, try and get trade back to the area. I'm sure this year will be particularly busy and the added accommodation will certainly be of help. I did also look at the, further into the planning because there's obviously been, as Anthony said, the work's commenced. I've seen there's an entrance and stuff that has been put in prior to planning approval. But actually, online, planning approval has been granted for a new entrance nine months ago. So everybody can see that online. And there's also an ecology study carried out as well to obviously remove the hedgerow as per their recommendations. So that's an application that's actually already been approved prior to that, so at least that's good. You know, and that has been done correctly. As for the other comments, obviously, you know, I'm not really too sure, but based on that, I think it's a pretty good proposal.
Is it something, is it, do you live nearby there?
Yeah, yeah, I lived in Dawlish all my life.
Yeah.
Live very locally all their life.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, obviously, you know, I've seen the development of Dawlish Warren. You know, I'm not for everything, but I think, you know, certainly a small scale development like this. You know, the land's restricted, so it can't grow anymore anyway. So that's like the maximum size, obviously you're surrounded by camping, but it's just unfortunate that there's no no camping of that nature really left in the area. And I think that's quite a nice thing to sort of bring families back to the area that don't necessarily want to go to like a big overdeveloped, you know, campsite like Ladies Mile or Golden Sands, Cofden, you know, places like that. So I think from that point of view, it's pretty good to sort of do something different in the area.
Okay.
I'm totally for it.
Well, thank you, Matt, for coming along and giving your opinion. We will take all of that into consideration, both from Anthony and yourself. We're going to carry on with the meeting now, so you won't be able to speak again, but do appreciate both of you taking the time to come along today. So we're going to go forward with the agenda. Thank you. So if I can move on to you, Yola, to give us some details of the correspondence, please.
Yes, certainly. So applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. Flat one, four Barton Villa, single storey side and rear extension. St Jean Exeter Road Garage revised scheme. Applications granted where this council was not consulted. Solima, Winwood Lane, Crown Lift, One Pine, T2 to five metres above ground level. And then applications contrary to this council's recommendation. Dawlish Warren Main Resort Grass Area, Dawlish Warren Installation of 34 metre Observation Wheel, loading and unloading platform with guarding and kiosk. And that's the one that I emailed everybody about with the more details as they did take on some of the comments that were given.
That's right. I think the conditions, I think, were very much in line with the things that we discussed here at the town council planning. So, okay. Moving on then. We've heard from two members of the public and we're now ready to, from the point of view of the first item, going into 2100572, which is the field Warren Road. This is a proposal for 26 bell tents, a shower block, a barn and 29 car parking spaces. So, Yola, can I ask you to share your screen and we can have a look at the development, please? Hopefully, members, you've had a chance to have a read beforehand, but. Excuse me. Right. So, do any members have any comments or any thoughts on this item at all? councillor Wrigley?
Thank you, Chair.
First to the past.
I noticed in the description it says reception, and yet looking through the plans, I couldn't see anything that was labelled as reception or anything as a sort of an administration building at all. And that gives me some cause for concern amongst other things. If it is a site with permanently erected tents and those are structures that need supervision, need checking, need, it's not like you roll up your tent, you put your tent up, if it falls down in the middle of the night, you can put it back up again. If this sort of tent structure has any sort of issues at any time, not only are the visitors going to need onsite assistance, and if there is no reception block, I'm not sure how they're going to get that.
Right.
But also with this sort of place where you roll up and there's 26 tents, I would be worried if it wasn't supervised, that there is no way of ensuring that it doesn't become a loud, noisy nuisance. I have severe problems with a number of other things on this as well. And all in all, my sort of feeling as I look at it is that it is too much in a small space. It's going to be quite high. It's going to be quite dominating. I think it could ease, we're already hearing, I'm already getting lots of complaints about the noise coming from Ladies Mile just down the road and their sort of outdoor entertainment, which is resonating down into the rest of the town. I think this one will also be quite prominent and noisy across the town as well as just to the a local resident. So it's more than the 40 odd houses that are adjacent to this. It will resonate inland as well, I think. But most importantly of all, having read through, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as far as I could see, they were talking about just connecting to the mains drains. We know this is just across from the already quite, how should we put it, pungent Timaru Gardens, a local sewage plant. And worst of all, they said that they would be putting surface water into the mains sewers. So I think this doesn't feel like the right proposal. If it were pitch up and tent and have a traditional sort of camping experience where you leave nothing but footprints and you take nothing but pictures, I would be less concerned. But this sort of 26 tents pre-arranged, pre-put up with sort of a party type sort of field. I'm not sure this is the right place for it and I have a lot of sympathy for what we've heard locally. I would be, I mean, I'll wait to hear what other councillors have to say, but I would be looking for a objection on the grounds of overdevelopment, poorly thought out drainage, overlooking and loss of privacy for the local residents and the potential noise nuisance that this could cause.
Okay, thank you councillor Wrigley. Another couple of members would also like to speak to this one. Councillor Heath, you were next, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I ask any other questions, just making sure myself and everyone knows exactly the spot. So as you turn off the main road, the 379.
Yeah.
Is it the, I think it's probably about, once you go around the bend, there's about the second or first gate on the right, that field there, is that where we are? We haven't gone down the hill, have we? Or is it down the hill?
We haven't gone down, sorry, if I may, Chair, we have not gone down the hill. So you're driving along the A379 from the Exeter Road into Dawlish Warren.
Yeah.
You go around a number of bends, you go past Warren Farm on the right. You go past the fungus shop. And it's then on that sharp corner round where you do a sharp corner and there's a row of houses round the corner, a row of houses on your left.
Right.
Then go along that last bit of flat and then down the hill towards Mount Pleasant Inn on the right.
Okay.
It's on that, on that really sharp right angle bend.
Right. I was thinking it was on that first field when they often do, well, they used to do fireworks and bonfires there, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's a bit more separated.
I'm glad that's clarified, hopefully that helps others as well. Obviously, I don't know some of the independent speakers, how independent they are, whether or not there's any interests, because they don't necessarily have to declare it as we do. But the most important thing is the habitat survey that hasn't been done. And the ones from the ecology, they weren't happy, if you've read that one. The fact, I seem to agree with the overdevelopment, there is rather a lot on not a massive site. A comment obviously of people being sick and the rest of it, well, that's humanity, isn't it? So not a planning issue as such, unfortunately. But it is a point, you know, if locals feel that this is going to contribute to it. It is a hard one here because it's a seaside town, you expect people to come away. And we've got to get the balance right between enjoying yourself, et cetera. So my thought is with councillor Martin Wrigley, that was if there's no supervision, there's no proper reception area, maybe the owner of the land pops in once a week or whatever he might do. That is a concern because also we now know there are fire risks, especially with camps, who tend to have barbecues and so on. And that's the last thing we want, is a fire down there. And the sort of reception with the fire extinguishers and all the other things is a safety issue going on here as well. So I'd want to see far more details on the plan, which is a bit skimpy at the moment, to make a proper decision for yes, that's for sure. So if it wasn't there, I'd rather say no, because the information is actually missing, which is a bit of a worry. So that's where I am at the moment, but I'm listening to everybody.
Okay. Thank you councillor Heath. Could we have a quick look at the plan? Could I ask you, just before I bring other members in, just so we can see the map stage of it, Yola, please? Just so everyone's really firm as to where it actually is. I think that'll be useful. So there's that, if you remember, we had members, we had a, this field came before us for the gate on that very, that quite sharp bend. As you turn to where the houses are and the bungalows are, that little road that's off at the top of the map there is Little Weak Lane that's joining Mount Pleasant Road. Is it Warren Road? I keep saying Mount Pleasant, so I think it's, yeah, okay. So there's that, you can see where the gate entrance is just before the bend. And obviously on the other side of that road are the properties that one of the members of the public was mentioning. Yeah, okay. I think that makes it a bit clearer for everyone. Okay. So thank you for your comments councillor Heath. We'll now go to, let's see, who's next on the list, councillor Foden, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm concerned that it's overdevelopments in the countryside, but also overdevelopments very close to a residential area. And while I accept that Dawlish Warren is known for its holiday, holiday resort and holiday destination, there's also many residents that live in the area. And I'm concerned for the proximity of this proposed development to the houses. Basically, it is a residential road opposite. And then I'm concerned that the amount that is proposed for there coming out on, onto the road by that bend. I'm also concerned to hear what the residents said, the members of public said, sorry, that trees and hedgerows have been destroyed during nesting season. And if that's the case, then that goes against the Wildlife and Countryside Act 1981. So I'm very concerned about that. So overall, I object to this application overall. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foden. I saw another hand a moment ago, councillor Moorhood, did you want to go ahead as well? Thank you. You're on mute. You're on mute councillor Moorhood.
The hand disappeared. Yes, several things concern me. A comment was made that there are no similar facilities. That's correct in a way, there are no permanent bell tents. However, there is a considerable mix of holiday accommodation around Dawlish Warren and from Exeter Road outwards towards Dawlish Warren and the coast, including a lot of campsites, which is, you know, it seems to cater for most people. There are cottages, there are lodges, there are caravans, there are campsites. I can see that this is something a little bit newer. However, it is adjacent to Ledstone Campsite. And the field that is being divided off, the one big field has been divided.
Yeah.
I'm disappointed that this is on the top part of the field and exiting onto that particular road around what is virtually a blind bend. It is actually opposite other holiday accommodation, rather than being the bottom end of the field, which already had a track and which wasn't so near. My concern is there is going to be a tremendous amount of noise from bell tents. I've stayed in a bell tent. Chudley did them, Chudley Rocks a few years back. And you don't do your cooking in the bell tent, you do all that outside.
Yeah.
So there is going to be a lot of noise generated. Now, from the layout on that plan, it seems to me that that layout could have been a lot more sympathetic towards the existing residents. If the buildings, if you like, were more towards the roadside, going down towards Mount Pleasant and the tents were concentrated more to the langstone end of the field, if you like. I don't, which is north and south from here. And the Ledstone, which is already camping, I would find it a bit more understandable, but to have a row of bell tents on the bank, because it's already higher, you see from the topographical map, and we know the area anyway.
Yeah.
We're going to have a lot of noise and potential fire risk. Certainly smells from barbecues and goodness knows what else. As you say, as councillor Foden said, really just across the road from very long existing homes. I think it could be a much better layout. They could do what they want, what they're thinking of doing, giving a bit of variety to the camping experience and the holiday experience. But I think it ought to be a much more sympathetic design to that field. So that most of the noise and smells or whatever else are not going to be directly across the road from residential properties. There's plenty of room in that field and there's a campsite on the other side. And at the moment, nothing on the other end of the field. So it doesn't seem right to me. Not the idea as a whole, but the layout that they're proposing.
Okay, thank you councillor Moorhood. Councillor Taylor, you wanted to make a comment on this item.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank both of the members of public for their inputs. It's not often that we get the both sides of the coin when we have an application like this. And certainly the online mixture of comments are some for, but mostly against. But I do appreciate the comments regarding the new offering that this, that this application could bring for Dawlish and bringing trade to the area. I was also interested about the application for the entrance, which of course was made prior to this application coming forward. So in terms of the permission that was given by highways, that would have been permission for access to an agricultural field. I think highways will want to take a second look at whether they believe this particular entrance is suitable for the comings and goings of two dozen bell tents, all which appear to be serviced by, mainly for car users, although of course we're not too far away from Dawlish Warren Station. Perhaps if it was self-assembly tents, there'd be more people arriving on foot, bike or horseback from, they wouldn't bring their horse on the train. But anyway, I think you get where I'm coming from on that. So yes, while I appreciate that it might bring business, it's also going to bring more traffic and it is a dangerous corner. And I would want to see certainly improvements. We can't ask the applicant to go and buy the other half of the field, which would, as I think councillor Moorhood would perhaps alluding to. But if that was possible, certainly you could make a better fist of this proposal with the entrance from the other end of what was the one field. And of course, you'd also be able to put your main buildings, A, B and C, A being the toilet block, if I read the plans correctly, B being the reception block and C the sort of communal area for people to get together to do what they want. It's not big enough really for a particularly big group of musicians. But I dare say that that could be on the cards, given enough support from people going there to camp. I think, but on balance, I am concerned about the amenity of local residents. It's a very prominent site. The main buildings are built on the most, on the highest part of the site. And while the bell tents themselves are demountable, the other buildings are permanent. And I'd say from a landscape point of view, I don't like it. From a noise generation point of view, I don't like it. And from a residence amenity, lack of amenity, diminution of amenity of the neighbours, I think it's probably the biggest thing against it. Yes, let's have something like this in the area, but no, let's not go upsetting all of the neighbours. They have to bear enough during the season. Yes, we need the trade, but no, we don't want people doing unmentionable things or throwing away rubbish, as we saw last season, unfortunately, near other residential properties on their way down to the beach or wherever it is they're going. So from my point of view, it's a welcome application, but it's not in the right place.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Taylor. Okay, councillor Heath, you wanted to come back in. Just picked at the post councillor Wrigley, I'll bring you in just shortly. Carry on councillor Heath.
Very quick, I'm just reading through the Devon Highways, it hasn't got a date on the form unfortunately, but it seems to be referring to this, but I'm a bit puzzled at the moment. It said 20 miles an hour, is it 20 miles an hour that bit of road there?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's that bit, but we said don't always stick to it. I think, I think what we've all said, it seems as if we're not very happy. Certainly an overdevelopment in my opinion. I like to see campsites seaside and I agree with the actual idea of having tents, but as has been pointed out, tents don't stop sound. And there will be a lot of noise in the summer. Also, are there any restrictions? I didn't see any when I looked through. Like particular months that they can stay there? Because some of these camps are tended to be almost all year round. Because some of these camps are tend tended to be almost all year round these days. Um, if I missed that one, was was there any restrictions on what they can do or come?
I don't believe so. I don't believe there are any.
On music or playing music?
No.
No, well, as it stands, I'm against them.
Okay, thank you councillor Wrigley.
Having heard everybody speak, I think I'd like to propose that we uh object, that we refuse, that um we we object on the grounds of it's overdevelopment, it's overbearing, the design is likely to cause um uh a noise environmental um issue. The uh drainage issues are not satisfactory. We are concerned about the road access and the overall impact on amenity to the local residents. I'd further like to put that if the officer is um uh of a mind to approve that this go to committee.
Could we add habitat loss as well?
Habitat loss is a good one to add as well, yes please.
Because it has been raised by a few people as well.
Okay, thank you councillor Heath. Are you happy to include that in your proposal, councillor Wrigley? Yeah, okay, thank you. Um councillor Taylor. You're on mute.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm just um looking up the application because I thought there was a restriction on the uh on the times that this would be open um on the application form. So I'm just looking at the application form now.
Thank you.
To see whether that does give an uh an indication of when it should, when it would be open.
The notes I had was twenty six bell tents, shower block, barn and twenty nine car parking spaces. So one mention was made of the um the entrance area and the idea of at least twenty nine cars coming and going.
Uh, so existing use, please describe the current use of the site. Preparations are being made to use the land for fifty six days camping this year. This will involve the deployment of portable buildings such as a shower, toilet block and reception to support camping. Ah, so I've misread that then, haven't I? Um, because the field's going to be used for camping this year for fifty six days.
Yeah.
But going forward, this is going to be a permanent site.
Yeah, with the bell tents, yeah.
So from that point of view, um, I think, yeah, we it it would be very reasonable for us to also propose the 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 site over the road, for instance, uh is only available from May to September, May the first to September the first, I believe, for for the for the top field, uh the um uh the eclipse field that we all know it as. Uh, so there is a restriction on 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 that, and certainly I would want to see a restriction. Uh, so that at least if 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 it does uh find favour with our planning with the Timbridge Planning Department, then that at least the 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 local residents won't have to put up with it for twelve months a year. Um, so so could we also add that perhaps to to the um to our proposal that it, but I think I would I would also can also support councillor Wrigley's um view that um that we would take this to committee. Because I think there's a there's a lot of questions that need to be asked really and to be satisfied. Uh, comments to be satisfied.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. Would you be happy to include that in your, it's becoming a long list, I know councillor Wrigley, but.
To include lack of seasonal restrictions, yes.
Yes.
As the objection.
Okay, thank you. Um councillor Moorhood, you wanted to to come in, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I would like to second that proposal, but I would like to add a general comment. Um, this isn't the only application coming. Um, over recent years, the holiday accommodation has expanded considerably, as has our housing development. And my feeling is that the sewage works at Timmeroo is not really keeping up with it. In fact, they do have plans to take in some places to divert um surface water out of the main sewage system. And this one, I believe you said it was going into it. They were trying to reduce the pressure by discharging into other local water courses, shall we say. So I think that we really got to bend this, bear these sort of things in mind in future until and unless South West Water come up with some major ref refurbishing and um expansion plans. This is something that's going to affect the the parish generally. But I'm happy to second that proposal, that extended proposal.
Okay, thank you councillor Moorhood. Um, I've still got two more hands wanting to to come in. Hopefully, we've got a proposal in a second. So are these just additional comments you you just wanted to quickly make?
It's very quickly to back up councillor Moorhood. Um, having sat with South West Water and helped them work with the redesign to stop the flooding down Secmait Lane that used to happen. They certainly are trying to redesign lots of the sewerage around the town so that the uh ground, the 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 groundwater is not going into the foul sewers. So they're splitting the two out, which is why this one's particularly difficult. Um, especially down at Ladies Mile, for example, they're doing a massive amount of work down there. And all of these things are to reduce the 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 load on the pipes in general and Timmeroo as well in particular.
Okay, thank you for that. Um councillor Taylor.
I can't I can't see any reference to the um service water going to the uh to the existing drainage system. Um, certainly the question number thirteen on the application form, foul sewage does go to the main sewer. And unfortunately, there isn't a question on the application form regarding surface water, and I'm looking in the wrong place. Uh, but but from that point of view, I would have very much have expected, and in fact, I don't know whether it's legal these days to allow um water to be directed, uh surface water, rainwater to be directed to the mains uh sewage system. Uh, that's precisely what South West Water have been trying to to split and, you know, would want to avoid it for any new application. Um, so so certainly, if 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 that has been indicated, then then um yes, it should it should be an objection, but I'm not sure it is. And I wouldn't want us to be to be taking it into account as a as a potential refuse, refusal unless we section, sorry, couch our terms effectively, sufficiently effectively.
So councillor Wrigley's coming back, I think he's mentioned, he's found something, I think.
Question eleven asks, how will surface water be disposed of?
Oh.
Patient form. And it says it's ticked the box for main sewer, having not ticked the box for sustainable drainage system, existing water course, soakaway or pond stroke lake.
Okay, I was on the wrong page. Thank you councillor Wrigley for that. Well, that's a that's a no, that's a no-no.
Okay. Okay. Was there any other points you wanted to make councillor Taylor, or are you happy you happy with that?
I'm happy with that, and I'm happy to sustain uh the objection from that point of view.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a proposal in a seconder. So I think we go to the vote as to whether we reject this. Would you like to go over briefly the um the proposal as you you made it councillor Wrigley, please? So Wrigley.
Can I ask Yola to read it back instead?
Okay.
I knew that was coming.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got um overdevelopment, overbearing, um likely, uh design likely to cause noise issues. Um, drainage um adds to existing issues, and I've got the note about surface water going to the main sewer. Um, concerned rerode and access, overall impact on amenities of local residents, loss of habitat. Um, and if officer is minded to approve, to pop it into cap B.
Okay.
And lack of seasonal restrictions.
Oh, lack of seasonal restrictions, yes, I've got that, as per the surrounding fields, is that correct?
That's right, yeah. Okay. Councillor Moorhood, a quick point, I was just about to say, let's go to the vote, but if it's a quick point.
It is a quick point, because we we know that there was an application to create this entrance, so we didn't know what it was for. And the highways letter, which is on this application, is not dated. We don't know whether that relates to simply a gate from the field onto the road or whether it applies to this actual application. I think we need to in some way identify that and ask again whether that relates to this particular development.
Okay.
Or whether they need to to revisit the eye, the the planning application.
So I think you can add the add the point out, we're concerned that there is, like, there could be highway objections. Or we want clarity on the highway objections. If that's okay, Yola, please. Are you you, I'm saying that for you councillor Wrigley, are you are you happy for that clarification? Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll go to the vote on on that. Is everyone clear as to to what we're voting for, as it were? Okay, so voting to um to reject the planning item twenty one double oh five seven two, please. Any votes for the application? Any votes to abstain?
Councillor Lather was she?
I haven't seen a vote from her.
Yeah.
I can't I can't hear you councillor Lather, you're on mute, sorry.
I wasn't voting because I was out of the room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so one abstention, but majority um against the application. Thank you. Right, we certainly don't expect um our members of the public who both came along to to talk on that item to stay with us. You're welcome to to log out and go ahead with your normal Friday night activities, I guess, from that point of view. If you wish to say you're more than welcome to anyway. We, ladies and gentlemen, are going to move on now to um to the next item, which is twenty one double oh six three six, and this is number seventy nine Exeter Road. This item is a erection of a summer house in the garden. So there we are. I haven't got a lot to see on that one, really, have we, from that point of view?
Chair, as point of clarification, sorry, can I just ask why do they need planning application for a summer house? Surely it's a temporary wooden building in the back of the garden, unless it's is it over two and a half metres tall or something? Is it is it really, really big? I couldn't tell from the.
I really haven't got an answer to that, if I'm honest with you. Um, it it's, the scale of it is really hard to judge. So I, I mean, my my summary is that it is of a significant size, so. But I will um bring members into, maybe they've got some wisdom to to share with us. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
I think it might uh may well be a a ridge height issue, uh being uh right next to the rear boundary. Um, am I correct in saying that this house, I can't see, can't work it out exactly from the plan, um acts on to the playing field rather than other other properties?
Yes, it does.
It does. Um, in in which case, I've absolutely no objection and would recommend approval.
Okay.
Good second now.
Thank you councillor Moorhood. I'm going to jump in while councillor Taylor has stopped speaking.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my only comment would be um from past experience. It's if you make something that's got a concrete base and it's a solid, permanent structure that it comes under planning, rather more than if it's what we think of as a summer house, which is a wooden structure with a temporary base.
Yeah, I I think it is, I think it's also, it's a reasonable size as well, so I think from from that point of view, yeah, okay. Thank you councillor Moorhood. Councillor Taylor wants to come in again. Okay.
Uh, yes, it would be permitted development if it was if it was not on the boundary. Uh, it would be permitted development. Uh, it 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 can be at the boundary, but the ridge height, I think, is governed down to three metres. I think it can be up to four metres if it's further away from the boundary. Um, so it's this is a, it's quite a big, it's quite a big summer house, but uh who's who's going, who's going, it's not going to affect anybody as far as I can see, unless they want to watch the football, the kids playing football from the roof.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Lather, please go ahead.
Yes, um as mine, as long as it stays as a summer house and doesn't become a accommodation. Because it looks rather large to me compared with compared with the house from the drawings.
It is right at the end of the the garden, so I think it would only be accessible as a summer house from from the property, but that, I take your point.
Well, normally we do, well, we did use to always put that in as a precautionary thing.
Yeah.
That it didn't become a residential.
Okay.
Accommodation, permanent residential accommodation.
Well, we have a, we have a um proposal to um accept the proposal. So I'm going to ask councillor Taylor if you would be happy to think in terms of that as a perhaps a condition or see if he will accept that councillor Lather. Councillor Taylor?
To be honest, Chair, I don't think it's necessary. It's it's a it's a smallish um footprint. Um, it's right at the end of the garden. It's it's, it would never be granted permission for um for a separate, a separate residential dwelling. Um, so so I don't, I don't really see the need, to be honest with you.
Okay, I'm going to move on, come back to you councillor Lather while you're having a think about it. Um, we've got other members who want to speak on it as well. Um councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, even though it might not be a residential building that we're a bit worried about, um I do know from younger children and friends and so on, lots of these summer houses are actually slept in by children overnight as a as a little sort of excitement thing almost.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not actually against that, but um I can see the point of being just slightly concerned of um it being an a new residential building. And these things are happening around the country with the housing shortage. And um people do sometimes sleep in these things for friends. If there's no noise, fine. Do they say if it's an insulated building or is it one of these very flimsy things? Is there anything on there?
I don't think, I don't think there was a lot of detail. I think it was an outline house, housing plan. Um, as you you saw, the plans were very, very straightforward boxes, weren't they, from that point of view?
Yeah, I'm I'm having a look here. I can see, it looks like an ordinary shed almost.
Yeah.
May mean that you don't have to say anything, but I don't know what other members think, whether it's just, whether if we are going to accept it, do say. Although councillor Taylor said didn't think it was necessary, but what's necessary and what's prudent is sometimes different. Um, I'm wondering if uh we should actually add, but not to be used for um overnight accommodation.
Permanent overnight overnight.
Yeah, 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 because there's there's no water or toilets there, far as I can see, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Whether that's a bit of an overkill, I don't know what other members feel on that one.
Okay. Um, and councillor Taylor's already made his his um his thoughts known, as it were, if you want to come back.
I feel I feel a bit brow beaten at this point, but I I'm happy to go with the flow, really. Yes, I can, I can see it would be useful to, I can see it would be sensible to to have, you know, providing it it's not used for permanent residential accommodation.
Okay.
As as an additional, Yola is just indicating she'd like to speak, Chair.
Yeah, I think the term, because this term was used quite a lot, so I think councillor Lather may have been referring to the sentence, something along the lines of that it remains ancillary to home. So it wasn't stating about, you know, camping or overnight or anything like that. It's it's that it does remain ancillary to the home as opposed to becoming something bigger and more separate.
Not a separate, yeah, not a separate dwelling is, yeah, that's, yeah, okay, that's fine. Are you you comfortable with that councillor Lather? Councillor Heath?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but it is two-storey.
Councillor, I haven't forgotten you councillor Moorhood.
Sorry.
No, no, okay, thank you. Councillor Moorhood, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I'm thinking along similar lines. I don't think it hurts to make the point that it should not at any time became become in any way a residential unit. It's not difficult to put drains and water down the length of a garden. And I know of somewhere in Brook Street, actually, from a few years ago, where an owner of a house much further along was using one of the. was using one of the cabin-style places on the edge of the brook for a grown-up child to temporarily live in. And I think thereby, you know, lies a danger, if you like. It doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't stop them building it, there is nothing to be lost by actually just stipulating that it should never become, as Yola said, ancillary to the main residence.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, that line has been agreed by the proposer. And that proposal has been seconded. I haven't asked the person who seconded it if they're happy with that, but I'm seeing nods, so we're fine with that. Did anyone else have anything else to say? Or are we ready to go to the vote on this one? Oh, councillor Heath, are you ready? You wanted to say something else?
Yes, please.
Carry on.
It was already mentioned by, I think it was councillor Lowther, that it's two-story, but am I looking at the wrong pictures? I can only see a single story, because somebody clarify that for me.
I was just looking at the pictures again to see if I could see.
It is single story. It is single story.
Right, I was just wondering where Mary.
Through you, Chair. I've downloaded the plans on a PDF from Yola's presentation. And it's a single-story building. It's, I would say, six metres wide by four metres deep by probably four metres, maybe four and a half metres high at the ridge. So, there we are. The scale is on the, is handily, it's to a 150 scale on the plans and elevations provided, but they've also provided a scale line which you can work, you can use to work the size of it out.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, before you go on to the next one, let's come back, I think, see where it comes from. I know that Mary Lowther is going to put us all right, but it is actually a lot taller, I think that's what you're probably referring to, than a single-story building. You don't normally have one, what, 16, 17 foot high, if that's what it is. That is pretty big. Do we realise that?
That was the point that was made at the start, yeah. Okay, that was what the concern was about. Councillor Lowther, you wanted to come in. Can't hear you, councillor Lowther. So you're muted. Thank you.
Muted me. This has got, I'm trying to defend myself. A pitch drew and it's got two windows, two-story. So it isn't a one-story building and the edge of the pitch roof, which I would say was the beginning of the pitch, is at the same angle and size as the roof of the house. That is the structure. So if somebody is looking at a different picture than I'm looking at.
I'm wondering myself if that's the case, but I think we've
So down on it is Timbridge site and it's got the planner.
I totally believe you, councillor Lowther, that's fine. I did say it was quite substantial, but I'm not going to argue over metres or centimetres or even feet on this one. That's fine where we are.
It's two stories, it's got two lots of windows in it, anyway.
Councillor Taylor?
I've got a feeling that councillor Lowther might be looking at a different application, because what you can do, if you sometimes open a file on the Timbridge website and have a look at some plans, and then you go back and try and change the application number, and it brings up the previous file that you've already looked at. This isn't a two-story building, it's a single-story building. It's a roof plan showing no windows in the roof. There are just windows to the front, which comprise, I thought it was three windows, something like that. Here we are. So it's like a three-piece patio door at the front. There's no other windows. It's a single story. So I
It stays here. Seven Vicarage Gardens.
This is 79 Exeter Road. This is 79 Exeter Road we're looking at now.
Oh, so well done, Mary. I'm on Vicarage Gardens, sorry.
Well, park that thought there. Park that thought there, councillor Lowther. I'm glad you mentioned, I was just going to ask you to read out the address that was with it, so thank you. We will move on then. Okay, we have a proposal and a seconda. And I believe we've, if you want to make clear the proposal, it's been a while, and we've been around the applications for a little bit, haven't we, with this one? So councillor Taylor, I think you've made the proposal. Please go ahead. Sorry, councillor Taylor, you're muted.
You've unmuted me.
I've just tried to.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
So my original proposal was no objection. Happy to include that the building is not used for residential purposes. But I don't think it warrants having the other note about it being ancillary to the main dwelling, because I don't think there's any chance whatsoever that this would be used as a separate house.
And I've kind of lost the plot here. Who seconded you, councillor Taylor? I'm sorry. Thank you, councillor Wrigley. It seems to have been, we've talked about this summer house for quite some time. So councillor Wrigley, are you happy to happy to accept that and second that, as per councillor Taylor's? Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Right, so we will take a vote on that, please. So in favour, no objections, including as long as the house is not used for residential purposes. Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We will move on to the next one. I will try and keep up with you all.
Chair, if you excuse me for one moment, I need to go and put a jacket on because I'm getting cold, but I will still be able to hear the conversation.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Right, we'll move on to item three, which is 2100692. This is a property, seven Vicarage Gardens, and this is a first-floor side extension. Okay. Can we go through that again, please, Yola? That's So this is quite close, I think, to the old Vicarage, isn't it? That part of that. I'm not trying to see where the actual location is. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I see they've already got the ground floor extension, and it looks as if they want to build above it.
That's right.
My query is, I was rather quick looking through those things. I'm not clear. It seems to be on the side that's adjacent to another property next door, and I'm wondering whether it's going to be overbearing from that point of view, if there are windows on there. I'm afraid it whipped by rather quickly then, so I couldn't quite decide what was going on.
We can certainly have another look at it. I noticed when I looked at this on the website today, there are three neighbours who've put approvals for it, in the sense that they are they're comfortable and practically recommending it to us from that point of view. So I would say that what you just said, that concern, I would say is certainly not the case.
My concerns then, yes. Thank you.
Any other members have any points to mention on this item? No. Shall we have another quick look at it, please, Yola, if that's okay? I see councillor Taylor's just raised his hand as I said that, because we have another quick look. I'm trying to establish exactly where it is on Vicarage Gardens. I find it quite difficult to Okay. Yeah, so it is
The big part at the top is where the vicarage is.
That's right. It's right at that kind of end of the cul-de-sac, isn't it? Yeah. So there's already a first-floor extension. And it's basically going above that. Yeah, okay. There we go. Thank you, Yola. Councillor Taylor, you're very patient there. Thank you. If you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And while I appreciate the support that this extension, first-floor extension, has got from its neighbours, I'm troubled by first-floor extensions with flat roofs. Not so much because of the aesthetics, although there is a lot to be desired from that point of view. But because flat roofs are notoriously difficult to keep waterproof. I've got a feeling that the officers may not wish to approve this one. I think from a design guidance point of view, and it's a 1960s house, but it's a very 1960s sort of extension. I don't think they would be recommending that you have a flat roof extension on a first floor.
Is that because of the size of it, councillor Taylor, because it is quite an extensive?
It's the very, very blocky appearance. It makes, you know, it's unapologetic from that point of view. It's an unapologetic application in terms of, you know, the style of the building. I'm not going to be voting against it, but I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Heath, you've raised your hands to have a say on this one, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor Taylor and I disagree with him. Just give me a balance here, you know.
Yeah, okay.
First of all, flat roofs now can be made very watertight with modern products. There's a new, well, it's not that new really, but it's new to Great Britain, called a rubber roof. And if you get industrial quality, it probably outlast tiles, go for 50 years easily. So yes, if it's a felt roof, I agree. So if we do approve it, we perhaps could add that, not a felt finish. But that's a building regulation, so I don't know whether we've got permission to do that. So that's where I disagree. Agree, a flat roof, subject to obviously the right roofing on a ground floor, is fine, really, it's quite normal. But I do agree on a second floor, it does tend to look a bit odd. So I think that being that strange design, it may have been done because the residents don't want another bit of extra section of height, because bear in mind that the good side of flat roofs is it doesn't take the skyline away. You have got another ridge, basically. So there is an advantage there. So it's a question of overbearing or do you want a flat roof? It's a tricky one, but I personally think it does look a bit odd. And as the rest of them in the road, although we haven't got a picture of the road, unfortunately, but whoever's ward it is, maybe if you're one of them, could tell me. And I don't think the other ones have got flat roofs next to them, have they? So is that a character? So I'm not happy, again, on that with Gary Taylor. I think that the design has quite a lot to improve on, to be honest.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Heath. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree. It would be preferable to have a roof which gave a nod to the main structure roof. But I just, I don't know whether we can actually specify that. But adding to what councillor Heath said, I was going to mention as well that you can have such a thing as a glass fibre flat roof, and they are excellent, and they don't leak. But that's not part of what we are here to do.
Well, it's certainly an education, this committee, so thank you for sharing. Councillor Taylor, you raised your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I, sorry, at first glance, I didn't see the detail on the elevation. I was looking to see whether there are other reasons. I think that they're looking to put a V-lux window in above the above this. So it must be in the hallway in the other part of the building, the existing part of the building. So that might be one of the reasons that they want to have a flat roof. But I could imagine that, you know, that there would be a way forward if they were to instead put a pitch roof on the side where they could bring light into the hallway still. But the reason for putting my hand up again is it, a fibreglass finished flat roof is specified on the plans.
Thank you, okay.
That detail.
ERP, it's called.
Fibreglass, okay.
Reinforced glass fibre.
It certainly is an education. Okay, so we've still got no further forward, in the sense that we haven't had a proposal. So is anyone minded to, there's been lots of statements of, I'm not comfortable with, but we're no further forward as to where we're taking this. So has anyone else got anything else to add on this point?
I, yeah.
Well, I'm going to come to you, councillor Heath, but councillor Foden just picked you at the post, so go ahead, councillor Foden.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I'm quite happy with this proposed application, and I'm quite happy to propose that we approve it. The reasons are, it doesn't increase the footprint of the house at all, of the building at all. And I think it's good that they're using the space above the ground floor extension. And then with the roof materials that has just been spoken about, then I'm quite happy to to propose that we accept it. Thank you.
Accept no objection, is that your thought? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Heath, you wanted to come in then, so go ahead.
I probably don't now. I'm not quite sure if I'm of persuasion. I think I'm actually abstaining, or I might even be against.
Well, no, you wanted to say something, so that's why I was bringing you in, but okay, that's fine. Councillor Morehead?
I just, sorry, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to second the proposal.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. So councillor Heath, I brought you in as you put your hand up to speak to the last item, but that's fine if you've changed your mind, that's absolutely fine. Okay, well, we have a proposal in front of us and it has been seconded. Hopefully you've made a note of that, Yola, so we will, unless there's any other hands raised to make a comment, we'll go to the vote, please. So that's accept the item, as is no objection. Can I see a show of hands, please? Any abstentions? Any against? Okay, thank you. So that's majority passed. Thank you. Right, we go on to the next item. And that is 2100733, and this is 33 Holcombe Road. Raising of the roof, it's all about roofs tonight, to form additional accommodation and associated works. And this is an area of Holcombe Road that we've been in before, members, in the last couple of meetings, actually. Where there's bungalows that have a really good view down to the sea. And I think this is a house showing that it wants to have an even better view of the sea from that point of view. Can we run through that again, please? Yola, thanks, just one more time. Thanks. So that's the before, a bungalow. And this is the proposed. Okay, thank you. I noted when I had a look at this today, we have objections with a next-door neighbour quite concerned about overlooking loss of privacy and staircases actually overlooking the property as well. So I thought I'd mention that just at this stage. Okay, councillor Heath, you have your hand raised first. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Is it number eight?
It's 33 Holcombe Road.
That's the one along by Minadab, isn't it, that bit?
It's the road going up the back of Minadab, and there's It's the road going up the back of Minadab and there's a row of bungalows, which I think gradually being developed as time goes on.
Yes, because members might not realise that road is split in two, so that's the 10th end of it. It was one of mine, I did drive down there last week, so I couldn't work out what they were trying to do. And I can see now what it is, that, as you're right, they are wanting to have a better view. There's a block of houses along that section, I think it's about four houses. The next door neighbour that's probably put an objection, it is very close. We're in about just over a metre, I think, so they certainly would be overlooked. For aesthetic point of view, it doesn't look good at all because it's, you've got the ordinary two stories, which is one from the road. And when you go in the back gardens of those houses, they're two stories, because it's going down a steep hill to the cliffs, isn't it? So this will be effectively three story now, from the back and two story from the road. But although it won't be showing quite so much from the front, because the way they're building, the roof, far as I can see from the plan, does come forward and affects some of the front of the house. So it's going to be a little bit like a castle effect, if you follow me on that one. The other ones are low, the other ones are high. To me, apart from obviously there are complaints, which we must take on board, but we look at it as a planning thing, they'll be the only one that's hired the roof. Although we've approved one hiring a roof, this is a different situation, this is in a quite a close block. And to me, I think it will spoil the symmetry of that whole section. I'm not really happy with that at all. And I don't think any design change would make a lot of difference, I just don't think it's fair to other people to have this sort of very large suddenly appearing next to them when it hasn't ever been like this in the past. I know governments are in favour of building on top of everything, but they haven't got to live there, have they? That's my comment.
Okay, thank you councillor Heath. Any other members want to come in on this one? No, councillor Taylor, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Having objected to the previous application on account of its roof, I want to be consistent. So, again, I think the design of the building is poor. I think from the front, it looks really weird. You've got some small windows and then you've got a big expanse of brickwork above it, and then you've got the eaves detail. It all looks a bit lost with a couple of V-lux windows, but the front, I guess, isn't the thing that most of the neighbours are objecting to, they're objecting to the overlooking. And yes, I think one of our, one of the close neighbours has just had a planning application approved. I thought, I think we thought a bit, that looking like two sentry boxes have been added to the roof detail.
That's right, yeah. It's in that same room, I think it's either the next door or one or something like that.
I mean, it's not really three stories at the back though, it is, but it is going to be, you know, two and a half stories out of the ground. You can see from the dotted line of the rear, across the rear elevation, where the land does lie. So my main objection would be the overlooking that you get, not just from the roof being raised, but by the rear of the house being pushed backwards as well, with those gable shaped windows in that particular room. And also an external balcony, so a balcony at that height, albeit that it's kind of, can't really work it out from this, yes, like. So the balcony must sit between the recessed, or the gable that doesn't extend forwards and the one that does, because you can't see it from the side elevation. So so, but it would still overlook other properties from a substantial height. So from that point of view, I would definitely have objections to this scheme in terms of overbearing and overlooking.
Yeah, I must admit, I'm quite happy to toss my hat into the ring on this one, I was concerned about that loss of privacy as well. I do think it's, I can understand the the residents wanting to maximise the view, it's a lovely high spot. But I think there is, there's due consideration for the immediate neighbours, and I think that is a concern. I think we are forced to take into consideration in this one, and I do agree on your points councillor Taylor there. Any other members want to make any comments on this one at all? No? Okay. Well, I'm happy to to take a proposal forward and say that we recommend refusal on the basis of overlooking loss of privacy and overbearing, I think, from that point of view, from the neighbours. Although I am the chair, I do need to have someone to second that proposal, so just quite a few hands, so thank you. So are we, does anyone have any other points they want to raise on? I think we've kind of clarified that from that point of view, so we will go to the vote on that one, please. So to reject this application on the above said items. Okay, thank you councillor Yola, joining with us, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, that's fine.
I'm being quiet.
I know you are, thank you. But your input's always valuable, thank you. Right, let us move on then to the next item. Not quite such a high area this one. Sherwell's Close, so this is on the way to Dawlish Warren. And we're dealing with another outbuilding, it's a garage, this garage this time. So it's 2100737, Rougemont Sherwell's Close Dawlish Warren, detached garage and workshop to the front. So these are properties that have got very large gardens that go down to the road. And this, they're proposing to put a, there you go, there's your, the large driveway. And so they're, where that kind of parked car is. And I'm wondering if that's what's going in the garage and the workshop is going to be doing a grand design on that car perhaps, I'm not sure, but it's it does say workshop, doesn't it? So that's, maybe I'm just making a story out of it, I don't know. Okay. Thank you, Yola. councillor Morehead. Please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yes, there are large gardens and there's plenty of room for this, but we're talking about a workshop as well as a garage. And it looks as if it's going to be in full view of everybody else. I don't know why they decided that they want it right at the bottom of the garden, but I don't suppose that's a planning issue, it just doesn't seem logical to me, or to be in line of sight of your neighbours as well. But unless there are lots of objections from the neighbours, I suppose, you know, if they're not worried, then I shouldn't be.
I did have a look and there aren't any objections as of today, but I did, I do know the area and there are other properties that have outbuildings, garages, etc, almost as a a boundary defence, as it were, at the bottom of their drives, you walk past those to get in. So I don't know if that's become part of the fashion, should I say, for Sherwell's Close, I don't know, but I take your point. councillor Wrigley.
Chair, you've taken some of the points I was about to say, actually, because there are a number of so it's an unusual little road, it was a lovely little road with about a dozen houses in it. It was in the middle of open countryside that is now, and all of the houses were right at the top tops of their gardens, the road is still unadopted, so it's a private road. They now have a massive housing estate on either side of the road, so behind, immediately behind their houses are the new houses on either side. So it's an area where the character has changed tremendously over the last 10 years. But many of them do have fairly substantial buildings at the bottom of the garden by the road. It makes sense to put the garage by the road, then gives you a bit of privacy in that front garden. Behind the garage, you do want the garage down at the bottom there by the road, not up by the house. It makes more sense for many, in many ways, I would suggest. All the houses along there are different, no two are the same in any way, shape or form. And I think this would be perfectly in keeping and I would propose no objection.
Okay, thank you. Any other councillor Heath? Please go ahead.
Thank you. A little clarification, looking at this other map on the other screen here. The grey bit obviously wishes the road, that, correct, is a private road?
Yep.
Yeah, and that's the only garage with those four houses along there, the others doesn't seem to have been built. So obviously we will set a precedent in one way, but there again, it is right at the end. But it is a private road, isn't it? So, and it doesn't seem to have any other garages, far as I can see.
I think some of them have got outbuildings, certainly, I'm not sure if they used as garages or what.
Might not be on this drawing, perhaps, they don't put outbuildings on, if they hadn't had planning permission.
I might have leafletted there in the past, that's how I got.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess it's not that bad really, is it?
Okay, thank you for that. councillor Taylor.
Yeah, I think slide number two shows the house almost opposite at the end of the road with a structure in the front garden. And yes, I can certainly see the need for it, I wouldn't want my what looks like a 60s American muscle car on slot mags underneath that. I wouldn't want that out in the open for too long. My only observation is that the applicant is, on slide four, kindly put the drainage plan in for, and I'm guessing that's the foul drainage run. So the existing drain run from the house to the mainstream runs directly underneath the garage, that's not too much of a problem, but if it is the main strain, it's only a metre away from the main strain to the side of the wall. And I think South West Water might have something to say about that, but that's really not a matter for us, it's a matter for the applicant and South West Water to come to.
Perhaps it's something we can highlight from that point of view, as a eagle, one of the eagle-eyed members of the Dawlish Planning Committee noted that from that point of view, so. Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. So we have a proposal, we don't have a second of that, is anyone minded to second councillor Wrigley's proposal? I'm comfortable with it, so I'm happy to, but councillor Morehead, actually you're waving your hand. You're happy to second that, thank you. Well, we will go to the vote on that, if that's okay, please, to accept us as set out, thank you. Thank you.
Did we add, before you go on, Chair, did we add that override about the drains to that?
That was, that was, we added that in, that was, as far as I took it, it was, but you're shaking your head, Yola. Did you add the?
I'd noted, but when you read out what it was going to be, it was as is, but I can put it in, if that's the understanding and that's everyone's understanding that they voted on, that's no problem.
That was my understanding, yes.
No, that's fine.
Because we can't enforce on that, we can't kind of make it as a condition, but we can say there was a
So you know the concerns regarding the drainage?
Yes.
The position of the
Yeah, position of the drain.
Relative to the proposed
There we go.
Position of the building, new building.
Okay, thank you. Right, let us go on then to, we're back at Mount Pleasant Road, we're not seeing the same item, ladies and gentlemen, but we're back at Mount Pleasant Road. 2100257, three Mount Pleasant Road, just across the road from the campsite where this all started. This is a roof extension conversion, including raising of the ridge height, hip to gable extensions, dormer windows, single storey extension, balcony with terraces to rear, reconfiguration of garage and raising of roof and associated work, so quite a large proposal for this property. We might need to go through this a couple of times, Yola, if that's okay, because there's a lot to have a look at, hopefully members have had a look. So very much a stepped balcony, a bungalow as it were. And taking advantage of the estuary views, I would imagine, from that side there. That's quite an, there's quite an increase of the development. Okay. Quite a lot to take in with that one. We might be coming back to having another look at that in a moment, Yola, if that's all right, but we'll come back to members if that's okay. So, any thoughts? We seem to have lost councillor Heath in the fog, he's back, okay, fine. Okay. I was, I must have been, I was concerned in the same way as we were looking at that property. This is obviously all about, again, looking at a view of the estuary. So it's quite a substantial extension, but is it affecting other people, I think is the question. councillor Taylor, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. This is a very, I'm sorry to say, this is a very disappointing application in terms of the quality of the plans. We're fine with regard to the existing elevations, which have been drawn up by an architect. And for the existing, for the garage and for the new garage. But for the house itself, I mean, these look like, these plans look like work in progress. And, I mean, the first one that you come to, you know, there's a new wall, or it looks like a new wall, or perhaps it's a bit of a double trimmer, so okay, so it's, I think it's something to do with the roof structure. Doesn't even look straight, but now I'd give credit for somebody having a fair go, but the fact is that these plans are supposed to, if approval were given, are supposed to be followed to the lesser. But, so if you put in a bent double trimmer, you're going to have to put in a bent double trimmer, otherwise you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be conforming to your planning, your permitted application. But I would be very surprised, actually, if our, if team bridge officers don't pass this back to the applicant to say, sorry, we're going to need more detail on these plans. Have a look at the windows, they're just in outline, there's no, there's no no real detail on them. And, but in terms of what it is that the applicant is looking for, I don't think, I mean, if you look at the last slide, the door's crooked. It's, he needs to have some, he or she, the applicant, needs to, I think, take more time with the plans to get them finessed, so that we can really see what it is that represented, so that we can have a reasonable look at what we can see. As it is though, I couldn't support this application, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other comments from members at all? No? I'm, I'm just not clear, I agree with you councillor Taylor, but I'm not, I'm not clear what it is. councillor Morehead, I see you have your hand raised, so before I start bubbling, carry on, please do.
Thank you Chair. While I'm thinking along the same lines, I think that I wouldn't be feeling in a position to make any comments on this application, and that I would like to see a much more detailed application come back to us in order to be able to really consider it in detail.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, I'm happy to propose from the chair that we, we do reject this application on that basis, that we're, we're not comfortable with the plans before us, we can't make a, an informed decision based on that. I think that's a fair, fair point to say. And we, we need more detail and more specification, I think, from that point of view. Is everyone comfortable with that? Excellent. Could I ask for someone to second my councillor Moorhead? Very quick on the draw, thank you. So we have a proposal and a second, so we will vote to ask for more clarification, I think, from that point of view. Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, now let's go on to, still got a couple more, afraid, I'll try my best. So we've got twenty one double O six eight three, but we're looking here at a, a tree, a TPOs, TPOs pruning and felling of ashes, oaks and chestnuts. And I don't know if members have had a look at this on the website, but there's some really useful videos that the landowner has posted on there, so you can literally see the trees and she's very concerned about them. There's a couple of little red Xs on the, on the road there, so you're not really going to see where, where they are, but yeah, thank you, Yola, well done. And they're, they're trees that are particularly lining the road, they're Cockwood Hill going on the, on the way just past St Mary's cottages. And the landowner is concerned that her public liability insurance is in danger of being used to a substantial effect. And her arbiculturalist has advised her to, to prune some, some large branches overlooking the road. And there's some that are actually dead trees, so it is about rooting out the dead trees as well. So she, she did a little videoed walking tour to show us what they were on the website, which is quite useful to watch. Any comments from, from members at all? My feelings are, okay councillor Taylor, my feelings are that we, we take this as a, a, as we do very often, and I'm very often minded to say that we obviously wish the Timbridge Arbiculturist to make sure he's comfortable with this application. But I see no reason to, to reject this, and if a, a trained arbiculturist has already had a look and is, is comfortable that work needs doing, then who am I to, to, to say differently? But councillor Taylor, you're next, and then councillor Moorhead, and then councillor Lawver.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I, I tried to view the videos through the planning portal, but I couldn't get him, get him to work on, on my iPad, so I'm just really going by the other sort of more static information that we, that we have here. For clarification, are we talking about trees at point X? Or at the two points X, or are we talking about trees along a line between the two points?
There are, there's, there are, there are about four videos that I saw this afternoon and there are, I would say, between those two points, there are some over leaning trees, there's one tree that's leaning quite substantially that needs to be cut down, it's dead. There are, it isn't the whole, whole row of trees, there's just intermittent bits and pieces that need to be addressed and large branches that need to be cut down. But they are particularly trees that are on that, on the road area, and the concern is that they're going to fall, could actually fall on a car, could fall on someone walking along the, the road.
All right, thank you Chair, it would, I, I think the, the character of the road is all about the, the, the tree cover there. And, and while, you know, there, there is always some danger that the, the tree will, will shed about or perhaps even topple over, I would, I would hate to see the sort of wanton destruction of the tree cover. It is, it is a lane after all, and, you know, the, the trees kiss at the top from either side. So I, I, I would certainly welcome a, a decision by the arbicultural officer on this, because I think the, there is the risk that a chainsaw happy chappy might, might, might chop off more than the, more, more than, more than we really want.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Moorhead, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yes, those trees which have TPOs, or it might be a block TPO for that matter, doesn't mean that things can't be done to them, but it does mean that it needs professional advice, as you were saying, from the Timbridge District Council's Arboretural Officer, but I would just add in that there are problems with ash trees, in fact, Timbridge are having to spend a fortune over the next year or two removing them from roadsides, because they are very likely to succumb to ash dieback and be dangerous. As well as that, of course, there are, there's legislation regarding how low you can have a branch or a shrub or whatever over a public highway, so this might be a mix of things. This could be a mix of meeting legislation, dealing with dying or diseased trees and/or general pruning and maintenance of trees, so I'm sure that with the proper professional advice, there, there will be a proper, a reasonable conclusion to this.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm, I'm comfortable with what I've seen, exactly is how I took it councillor Moorhead, that you've just mentioned. I'm happy to propose that we, we accept this as with the proviso that the, the Timbridge District Council's Arbicultural Officer is involved and approves the, the, the plan. That we take this as, we accept this plan as, as it is, but with that, with that proviso. Can I ask if anyone's happy to second that? Councillor Lawver, you're whip quick, you're happy to, you're happy to, to second that proposal, you want to say something?
I was in the queue.
Yeah, you are now.
I am. And I was in the queue to second it.
Excellent, thank you, thank you very much. Did you want to say anything else, or are you happy with that?
No, no, I'm happy with the wording that you've, you've said.
Okay, that's fine. Then we will go to a vote, if that's okay, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. And if you can get to see the videos councillor Taylor, I think you'll, you know what I mean. Okay, we're almost there, we have one more and then we're looking at appeals, so Friday night is not at all lost at this point, but we do have twenty one double O six eight six. And this is Cofton Country Holiday Park, we're back with the holiday proposal, as it were, eight new static lodges with decking area, sixteen parking spaces and access, so this is in the, the Cofton Country Park Star Cross. And I noted this is literally the next tier down from the planning permission that was gained eighteen months ago. Two years ago, I think. So the higher, you can see the lodges in that higher point in the plan there, those were the most recently granted to this, to this site. Excuse me. These lodges are either three bedroomed or two bedrooms, and they're described as cabins with they have decking around two sides of them, they're like one length and the ends of them as well. Okay. We've had a look at the pictures, the members happy or unhappy with anything they see. Councillor Moorhead, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, I haven't looked at this one in detail. I have a few comments, are these meant to be second homes or are they holiday homes for renting weekly, monthly, whatever? And whatever they are, again, going back to sewage and surface water, are there specific plans included in here for the slow release of, of surface water? And maybe for septic tanks, drainage or whatever, or is this all going straight into the main sewage system again? And if they are for sale as second homes, what are the restrictions on them for the, the number of weeks in a year when they could be used?
Lots of questions there, and I know from when I was having a look at this item, I might be able to help with some of them, they've got plans for French drains for the if, I'm glad that means something to you, because there's again, it was, I've been learning about roofs today and this is about drains as well. But there, there are plans for, there are plans for yeah, the, the, an ecology plan, they are going to be on the, they're not going to be sold or as holiday homes there for rental as the other cabins and the previous development are, so they're for weekly or fortnightly hire by people during the holiday season. And there's an ecology plan that goes with them along with a planting plan. So I don't think I've answered all the questions, but hopefully that's a starting point from that point of view.
I think you've answered them all, except
Don't ask me to describe a, a French drain, that's all I know.
It's just another major, larger version of a soakaway, if you like. They're sometimes called Dutch drains.
Something else to add is that they've got photovoltaic arrays on the roof as well, so they have got, that's why they've got that kind of slant, so they are able to contribute to the local, to the electricity when the sun's shining as well, which is, I think, quite a positive.
So the only, only other question I had was, how many weeks a year are they going to be allowed?
I'm afraid I don't know, but I think, I don't know, Cofton does, it does, it does have a, a set period when it's not open, I believe, but okay, I'll, I'll have a look that while councillor Taylor is, is speaking, you're, you're next to speak councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair, I, I'd actually like, this was a late item, it wasn't, I don't think on Yola's initial send out of slides, if I'm correct. So if we could run through the slides again, please, Yola, I'd be very grateful. Check, did you say this, this was actually a step down from
That's right.
Existing chalets?
Yes, it's the next section down.
So they're, so they're redeveloping an area which is currently used for camping or for the sighting of motor caravans?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's for camping they were using, but you can see that it was obviously the intention that something was going to go there because of the, the kind of pathways and what have you going to it there. You can see the kind of, the, the terracing effect, as it were, of the land there.
Well, from that point of view, in that, Chair, I'm, I'm relieved that that, with, that the development isn't marching further and further up, up the hill. And, but, but on the other hand, I think it's a shame, in a way, that we are losing some of the, some of the land that was, that was otherwise used for, for camping. But I think, given, given that there there may be other fields coming forward for camping.
Yeah. Quite possibly.
Accommodation will be taken up elsewhere.
I mean, they are quite large lodges as well, I mean, they're, they are quite substantial. Some of them are three bedroomed, some of them are two bedroomed, and each of them have two parking spaces with them as well, so that's, they're quite substantial kind of but they're quite spaced well, I think, in the, in the landscape from that point of view.
I think, I think if they, if they, if they are, they can be mandated for, for rental, then I wouldn't have an objection.
Okay, so they're not, to not be sold for holiday homes you're talking about, yeah, okay. Okay, that's something we can consider if we get to the proposal stage. Councillor Foden, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, I agree with councillor Taylor's last comment that, to be sure that they're just for rental only. And then I'd like to add that I like the design. I'm, I'm happy with this application and I'm really happy that they've, that they're looking ahead to help with the climate emergency and that they've got the solar panels on top of them. And I, I like the design and I'm, I'm happy to, to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Heath?
Thank you Chair, I'm struggling to find the application, it disappeared off my other screen, anyway. I can see where they've got the drawing, they've got trees dotted around.
Yeah.
It seems that they just pulled out the ones that are already there and circled them, which makes us look as if they're planting loads of trees, I'm not sure if that is the case. So if we were actually, because it's quite a void area there, as sort of to say, let's go ahead with this one.
They have got an ecology plan, councillor Heath, with it, but there's, there's a lot to, there is actually an awful lot of things to read on this one, but there are, I think there are some arbicultural implications, because by, by virtue of the fact that there were more trees when it was a camping field, I think there, there are, some are going to be going and they're just bringing others in, so I think that is, but they're balancing that out from that point.
I think it would be great if we could add an override by saying, we would like to see more, more planting of trees, because these are, these are the times to do it, we, everyone's shouting, how can we stop the carbon? You know, well, there are now scientists working on some harebrained ideas, they're sucking it out of the air with a hairdryer, as it were. The best thing to do is plant a tree, trees lock up carbon, but if we don't do them now, they won't be any good, because they take about thirty years before they really have much impact, so I'd like to see us, if we could, and we're not necessarily content with the number of trees they're going to plant. I don't know how you'd word that, but there we go.
I think, well, it's a difficult one, they are, they are accommodating, because there's only so much space, and I'm certainly, I don't, I agree with what you're saying. But there's only so much space that they can put the plants in, they, the trees in, they can't put them too close to actually shade out the photovoltaic arrangement on the actual roofs, but I think they are planning to do as much as they can with hedge rows and with extra trees, but I, I take your point, it could be that, could they consider other planting in, on the way to the properties, or I'm not sure.
There's also the, as I think it was Gary Taylor said, there's the bit at the back where they do have trees. If they did plant a few more there, it'd make it less likely than they want planning permission there, two years' time, so maybe that is a crafty way where you can get a step ahead of them for a change and suggest maybe at the back of the site or something.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Wrigley? Planning plans all round here, okay.
This is a, a field I know well, there is a public footpath that actually runs through the top of this field and it's, it's, and over the last twenty years, I've, I've walked through this field many, many, many times and seen its evolution. It was originally just quite a steep, sloopy field with nothing on there at all, it's been sculpted and sculptured and the cabins on the height put in. I was quite relieved when I saw that this application was for an infill of the existing space and not an extension out into, outwards. Most of the camping within this site is of course in the fields out towards Orchard Lane, towards St Mary's Cottage Way, which is where there are acres and acres of, of green fields that they use for a, a traditional pitch or tent. I'm sure there's plenty of space there. So whilst I'm sort of concerned about the sort of the, the ever increasing size of, of, of all these places, I think this one is, is sensible and this particular site is, I'll give them credit, they are always taking measures to do what they can, they have a a biomass boiler on site for all their heating, they have various other sort of relatively sound ecological attempts. I would like to agree with the encouragement to see them plant more trees. Because that reduces noise and shields the, shields the place as well as making it pleasant and being ecologically sound as well, so all in all, I'd say a, I, I would go for a no objection, but please plant more trees.
Okay, Yola, you quickly come in and then I'll bring councillor Moorhead in.
Just to let you know, it's just hit nine o'clock, so I know you're on the cusp of a vote, but you do need to just to vote to extend, just to finish off with this one, and then it's just noting the appeal.
Okay, so can I see a show of hands to just extend, hopefully, just a little while? Thank you. Okay, councillor Moorhead, I'll bring you in next, please, go ahead.
I like the way that this design is just not another row of things, they're actually following the contours of the land.
Yeah.
Means that it's also more private for each of these places. Unfortunately, it also means that we're going to get a lot more traffic in the area, although from that site, people should be able to walk to the beach and so forth, and the country park. Very, very pleased to see that there are some nods towards being more eco-friendly. One thing I would have loved to have seen would be them putting an electric charging point somewhere within their site. We can't really specify that, but.
Well, it could be that we, we add to our, our notes that we would, we would like to see that, and we'd like to see more trees in the ecological plan. I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable nod, we can't mandate it, but we can, we could say that that is something that we would look favourably on as well.
You know, they have a, a large area of land, so they could, they don't have to plant the trees right between the properties and overshadowing the photovoltaic cells. There are lots of other places where they could enhance the greenery, so to speak. But yes, an electric charging point would really put the icing on the cake.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. councillor Heath, with your eco hat, I suspect.
Yeah, I feel very embarrassed that Val Moorhead got there and I didn't say it, so I apologise for that one. But absolutely agree. A holiday camp is ideal for a charging point, people are going on long journeys, in 10 years' time, there's going to be a lot more electric cars. I think we should make quite a strong point, rather than just with note, as a holiday destination with electric car, this is a vital infrastructure that they need to add to it, thank you.
Okay, we can't mandate it at this stage, but we can, we can at least say it as strongly as that, so that we can see how it goes from that. Can I take it from that, that you're, you're giving us the proposal councillor Heath? Because that sounds awfully like one to me.
Well, okay, if you want it as a proposal, that we accept it with a proviso that we've added. If we could hint or suggest perhaps a few more trees.
Include more trees on site plus an electric charging, an electric charging point.
And a double one, I reckon, because they, they normally come in, well, they do, they, well Devon County Council are doing double ones, and I assume that's how they come, so a double char, one isn't much amongst that site, let's be honest. So.
Electric vehicles, couldn't we?
Yeah.
There we go, well, we, we pitched it at two, they might come down with one, I've, I've heard of these kind of negotiations. Thank you. Okay, Yola, are you, are you happy with that, that wording?
But the notes I have, if you would like them.
No, that's fine. We'd like it to be, we, we, we want it to be mandated for holiday rental.
Yeah.
We would like them to include more trees and shrubs on site. We appreciate the, the eco plan, but more trees please, and also electric charging points.
A double.
Do you want it specified as double, or just would encourage the addition of electric charging points?
Points, I think that would be good, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good. We can't mandate any of them, but it would be a good thing to, to put, put a wishlist from that point of view, I think. Well, I'm happy to second your proposal there, councillor Heath, if that's okay. And I think I might have just pitched you at the post councillor Lawler, I apologise. I'm sorry, I didn't, I only just looked down and saw your, your hand raised then, so apologies. But I think we've, we've come to the point where we've, we're on agreement of this, this last item. So we will take a vote on it, please, ladies and gentlemen. Vote for approval with the aforementioned provisos, thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, we now come to the last item, which is to, I don't think we've got anything to see on this one, have we Yola?
No, it's just to note.
And this is to note, appeal 21 00686. This is eight Oak Hill, which if you recall, ladies and gentlemen, was a two-storey, if I remember, extension to a property at the rear of it, I think it was a rear extension, first and second floor. And it kind of looked out over the Luskam Estate from Oak Hill. And they've got quite a substantial appeal document on the, the website for it. So they've obviously employed somebody to, to look at this in detail for them. But at this stage, we're just noting, but councillor Moorhead, I see you've got your, your hand raised, so please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, we're just wondering, Yola, whether we actually have any information as to why it was rejected at Timberj, because we saw no problem with it, it, it wasn't overbearing on, or it wasn't overshadowing anybody else. And I just wondered what their grounds were, they must have some strong reason.
I did look at it this afternoon, Yola.
Yeah, yeah, I can forward the document around, so you can have a look.
Yeah. It, it seemed to be, one of the, one of the provisos was that it was overbearing on the neighbours.
But it was on the rear, it's not looking at all any neighbours.
And I think, yeah.
I can't see Luskam Castle from there.
I think it was from the lack of, lack of sunlight as well, there was lack of light or something like that, lack of light on one side. But I'm not sure about where it's positioned, whether that's true or not, but I'm not. Our decision was that we were, we were relatively comfortable with it, and there were no objections from the neighbours, if I recall. I think we were, we, we recommended approval from, from our point of view.
I was just, just surprised, and I'm wondering what they'd spotted that we hadn't, you know.
But if you'd be happy to, to share that, that document, Yola, that's probably the quicker way to do it, if that's all right. Okay, so can we just take a quick vote to, to note the, the appeal that's, that's gone in? Thank you. Right, that brings us to the end of our first Dawlish Town Council Friday night session of planning. So thank you, thank you very much for, for joining me and for your attention.
You too.
To all of the, the items.
Wasn't that better than going out for a drink in a pub garden?
Absolutely councillor Moorhead, absolutely.